We are welcoming to our meeting, first meeting of the new year as we're in the city council. So then we'll begin with a meeting call and meeting at four, six oh one. So if you have a vote.
Senator Andy Alley.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke.
Here, Bea Paul.
Councilmember Collins.
Here, Bea Paul.
Councilmember Gates.
Here.
Councilmember Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Wedden.
Here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Senator McKee.
Here.
Attorney Board.
Here.
Okay, so well I've applied the leaders and I'd like to invite our newest member of the council, Deputy Mayor to be here.
Flight of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business is the election of a mayor and deputy mayor. I'm going to invite our city attorney of the board to take a moment just to go through the procedure that we're talking about. Take a moment and give a lesson in city experience.
Sure, this is now a procedure that the council has followed in prior years. Nominations can be made by any council member, nominations do not require a second. After all the nominations are made, then you will proceed to vote on each name individually. The first name, the first person who wins a majority vote is elected the mayor. So if someone has a majority before all the names are called, they vote against at that point. If you go through the list of names and there is no majority, then you usually go through the list and vote again in case somebody changes their position. In fact, if you're going through the list twice, there is no majority, then you would switch to the weighted ballot system as we did last year.
Okay, then with that said, I would entertain nominations for the election of mayor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Sissy Brooke.
Are there any nominations for the position here?
Yeah, Mr. Deputy, I'd like to make a nomination for a person that's been on the council for a number of years, has a great deal of experience, has put countless hours of volunteer time off the grid, behind the scenes for the support of our citizens, Port Angeles. Person that's gone through the designation process to achieve the designation of certified municipal leader through the American, or the, excuse me, the Washington Association of Cities, and that'd be our current deputy mayor, Andy.
Are there any other nominations?
For the record, for the record, I'd ask that each of the names put forth would accept the nomination.
It would be an honor to accept the nomination.
And I really deeply appreciate the kind of thought you have. I guess, maybe it is. Okay, let's begin this process. We'll start with Sissy Brooke, whose name has been put in nomination. I'll just ask, for those that are not here, Sissy and Brad, just be clear so we can understand your vote. So, I can ask those in favor of Sissy Brooke to serve as mayor, please say yes.
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 And I would certainly ask those that would say yes in behalf of, after you come in, please say yes.
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 So, let me make sure I staffed and let's make sure, let this play. You know, three votes for Sissy Brooke and four votes for myself, is that correct? Okay, now, I don't know what to say. I, those of you who know.
You do not respect us, we do not respect you.
Agreed. I, I will say just one thing, but then we'll proceed with the meeting.
Your sign's up, so go on.
Those of you who know me well enough to know that I don't come to these meetings with prepared statements, I speak from my heart. I, I truly, I cannot tell you how grateful I am and feel the privilege to serve this community. I want to, I hope you can all hear me. I, you can all hear me?
No.
Louder.
Okay, let me speak as loud as I can here. Those that know me well, know that I have always, and I'm going to speak for the council too, to the extent that I can in this respect. I don't know of anybody I've ever known who's served on the council who hasn't had the best interests of this city. I really mean this sincerely. I also then will close by saying this. My campaign literature, my campaign sign, seven years ago when I ran for the position of some council, said, "We need to work together to do the best that we can possibly do." So, do me the courtesy and give me a chance to finish. You're going to each of you having an opportunity and just to, during the course of the public comment period, to share your feelings. And we are here to listen to your comments and your feelings. So please respectfully offer the privilege of saying a closing. I stand by those words every minute I did on first meeting of my first term. I think there are people in this audience, I know there are people in this audience who know that, what I really enjoy doing the most is talking eyeball to eyeball, and heart to heart. So it's my pleasure, I don't care how many of you there are, but there are people in this audience already tonight receiving this meeting who've taken me up on the opportunity to talk to me, person to person, heart to heart, eyeball to eyeball. My invitation to you is, listen, and as mayor, I extend to each and every one of you in this room, whoever you are, what your perspective of your opinion of me or what we've done in the past, I give you the opportunity and my sincere word that I will reach you, person to person, face to face, and you can share your feelings with me. I really, really mean that. I don't care how long it takes, I don't count how many days it takes. I don't do it the way you just did it. That is what serves both of us. If you have feelings you want to share with me, if you want to try to figure out how we work together to be the best we can be together, I stand prepared to do that. With that said, let's go to the next part of our meeting, and have a good public comment period.
As a deputy mayor.
Oh, actually, that's another question. My apologies. If we needed a deputy mayor, I may need that one than anybody else. So with that said, can we then accept nominations for the position of deputy mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Sissy Brooke for deputy mayor.
Any other nominations for the position of deputy mayor? I will put forward the nomination of Councilwoman and former mayor, Sissy Kidd.
Sure.
Sure. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Those members of the council, I speak in all the area for those of you who are out of the room, that first nomination is for Sissy Brooke. All those in favor of Sissy Brooke as deputy mayor, please say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
How are you even capable of being mayor? You don't even know your councilor's name.
So.
No, that's ridiculous.
That were a total of. Those in favor of nomination, I actually have watched your official count on that, versus Sissy Brooke.
I believe it was three, Councilmember Wedden, Brooke, and Meredith in favor.
Thank you.
And for the nomination of deputy mayor, Sissy Kidd, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Yeah.
What about the people?
Yeah.
It's our city.
Okay, so now we have a total of three votes for Sissy Brooke and four votes for Sissy.
Four heights.
Sherry, would you like to share?
I would like to accept this nomination for deputy mayor. I listen to you and I acknowledge you, but thank you very much.
You're the people.
Okay, let's now go to our section of our agenda. Are there any, I have a list of names. Please know that there are two sections of our agenda regarding, it's the second public comment section, section N. So, given the fluid and nature of our agenda this evening, I expect that there will be a time to speak in our comment period here. Our period will be, as it has been in the past, we invite you to report, I hope to pronounce all these names correctly. If I don't, my apologies in advance. We invite you to limit your comments, to be respectful of others who follow you up to three minutes. And please, I invite us to be civil tonight. But we do want to hear from you again. Please accept my invitation and go to the restroom. I stand prepared to talk to each of you, as I think every member of the council. You can access us by email, in person, however you wish. You stand prepared to hear your comments both this evening and as your time is scheduled for this. So first, up on the list is city attorney. Please state your likes or resentments.
City attorney, five thirty, West Eight Street. Well, so much for the fluoride survey. You all were given ample, now above and beyond, amounts of scientific studies and evidence regarding the ineffectiveness of ingesting fluoride and documented harmful effects it has on the human body. Stacks of actual unbiased studies proven this to be true. You either didn't read or consider these well-documented studies, or you have been bamboozled. And I looked that word up, it means to mislead or cheat, to practice trickery or deception, meaning was done to you. There are only so many logical reasons for you, for your inept decision. The only remaining explanation is that you will receive a personal benefit. This is my logical opinion. The survey was non-inclusive, apartment dwellers were not included, and some households have one utility bill and three or four adults living there, eighteen years or older. Every person receiving fluoridated water age eighteen and older needed to be given a survey. This was not a survey, and it does not reflect the public's opinion on this issue. Some of the zealous proponents of fluoridated water received money from Washington Dental Services Foundation, is CEO on the board of the Dental Association and/or has invested stock in the Dental Association, major conflict of interest. These individuals should not have had any input, in my opinion. Even still, the opponents of medicating our water, those of us that are against the medicine in our water, we still won the survey. Surveys not returned, do not, do not indicate a yes for fluoride vote. That is ridiculous and divisive. When any one of us do our jobs poorly, or are inadequate, or being deceitful, we lose our jobs, and rightfully so. We, the people of Port Angeles, pay you to represent us, whether you agree with an issue or not. Some of you have lost our trust and support and are not representing the majority of the people. And in my opinion, these people need to step down from their elected or appointed positions or be recalled. The kind of politics Port Angeles is experiencing is the kind of situation that by word of mouth gets around quickly, even all around the country. And it will be a huge detriment to all of the people of Port Angeles.
The next on the list is Emily Skell, she'll need to have the microphone to her.
Green and yellow lead Kellen, for protective maintenance and future, allowed in spring. Happy New Year. We can and will fix the fluoridation problem. A monumental mistake was made by the four members of this council. Who were influenced by pro-fluoride advocates to apply the city's unique police powers to force continued fluoridation. They entered in ignoring the expressed voted wishes of fifty-seven percent of water consumers when they gave themselves the power to countermand those issues. Some two thousand three hundred and eighty-one households causing over seven thousand people object. The fluoride floor cited to recommendations from local professionals who told you fluoride must be put in the water because poor children cannot avoid it. Avoid it? My goodness. Well, that's compliance with medication in medical terms. That's their goal, and it slams directly against the principle of informed consent to medication, a constitutional right which, by the way, is not supposed to be confined to the wealthy. Note that a glitzy, expensive campaign failed to convince your water users that fluoridation was a public benefit. Professionals are supposed to be moral and are legally unable to force medication on competent adults, but they achieved their end through persuasion of the four councilpersons who actually exercised this police power last December fifteenth. What to do? The easy answer would be a motion for reconsideration and reversal of at least one councilperson's vote for ongoing fluoridation. This would settle the matter with cessation of fluoridation after May eighteen, two thousand and six, that's this year. A slower but effective process for citizen control of run-of-theirs government representatives can be achieved by the process of changing the form of municipal government to one authorized by RCW thirty-five. Adoption of a new form of government under RCW thirty-five means all officers, including all councilmembers, are freshly elected when the new government is adopted. Rules and local options are set out in state laws RCW thirty-five and RCW thirty-five A. Our immediate priority is legal research to select the desired features of what this new government should look like. Currently, Port Angeles operates under RCW thirty-five A and has done so at least since November of nineteen seventy-one, when Port Angeles ordinance that seventeen forty-six was passed. A change in city government can be initiated by a citizen petition with four hundred and sixty-seven ballot signatures, and then the proposed change is voted on at a subsequent election. We request that one councilperson who voted for ongoing fluoridation request reconsideration. That may not happen. If the fluoridation vote is not reversed, however, we will win in the long term, but we will have to change the form of city government to do so. We want to avoid citizen consumption of at least three developmental neurotoxins that are given throughout that are added to the water. We want to avoid continued fluoridation concentrations that are too high for babies. We want to avoid more protests from an aggrieved people. Hopefully, this council will come to its political senses, reverse course, and avoid the need to change the form of government to stop fluoridation. If one or more of you have such contempt for the rights of citizens that you continue to want to force them to take medication against the will of the majority, then perhaps you should not remain in office as a councilperson. We hope this council will choose to end fluoridation this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Next on the list is Jim, Jorge?
Jorge.
Jorge.
I calmed myself for a minute. I want to commend the first two speakers and our great leader, Elwes Kellen, who's done more for this peninsula than probably any single person in the last seventy-five years. Secondly, I'd like to point out that there were a number of erroneous statements when the council voted to continue fluoridation. The first one I'd like to address before I forget it is that we would be considered a backward community. I think it's abundantly clear at this point in time, we have become a backward community by virtue of the democratic process being ignored. That's the first order of business. Secondly, SWIM has never been fluoridated, it's a thriving, growing community with all kinds of new businesses coming in on a regular basis. So that, that argument doesn't fly. Forgive me if I get rude and/or seem condescending. The logic that was used relative to the vote count and the vote numbers was absolutely ludicrous and infantile. It had no bearing in logic. You could translate that to any election we have throughout our country, including President of the United States, where it's rare that we get over forty percent of the people to get off their butt and cast a vote. Okay, we had a survey. We had a huge organization spend a mountain of money to convince us something we don't want. They failed. A sixteen percent margin is considered a landslide in any vote. Beyond the fact of whether or not we actually want fluoride in our water, beyond the fact there is mountains of evidence that I am just unable to accept that any person with any logic cannot weigh the potential for injury or children's cavities. Beyond the fact that there's no evidence, there is none that demonstrates drinking this substance is going to prevent cavities. You can look at studies nationwide, you can look at communities, you can look at SWIM that has fewer cavities per capita than we do. These arguments don't fly, it's time for them to go. Before I forget, I hazard to say that it's rare that there's a crowd like this at any one of these meetings, number one. Number two, with the intensity of feeling and caring about a topic. Number three, all of you here tonight, let everybody you know to come to every city council meeting until this changes. Email, social media, phone calls, and do everything you can, writing letters, meeting with your council members. I have the privilege of meeting with the mayor tomorrow morning, I'm sure he's anxiously awaiting that.
I am.
Okay. But beyond that, the democratic process which has been bastardized, there's no other way to put it. This is a country based upon one person, one vote. You councilmembers decided to put out an advisory ballot, you chose to ignore it. The backlash will be that we will never go away. That we will continue, we will follow Elwes's lead, we will change this government if needed. It won't take long. But you guys need to search deep within your soul as to why and how you actually let this happen. And beyond that, you need to look at what this has done to our community. You've enraged the public, you've divided the public from those who want a democratic process to those who will not allow it. That's unacceptable. So I'm encouraging all of you, hopefully Brad and Sissy can hear me.
Yes, you can, thank you.
You will cost the city a fortune if you continue down this path. Beyond the fact that the city at this point doesn't have the money to afford fluoridation and the upgrades to the system. It's irrational, illogical, beyond all of that, it's extraordinarily dangerous. Last but not least, I'd like to know if and when we have a class action lawsuit for health damages, who will be accountable? Who will be accountable when they prove that? The thyroid issues, the brittle bones, the cancer, the lowered levels of IQ, all of these things are proven definitively, which essentially they are at this point. Who will be accountable? Are you councilmembers willing to risk the health of our entire community against such overwhelming evidence? It just boggles my mind. Anyway, last but not least, get everybody out there you know to keep doing the play. Thank you.
Next name I have is, I believe it's Jane Handerhuth. Let me show that we can move this at the moment as quickly as practical. After that, after. After that, after Jane, it would be Adrian Tobin or Joe Ben.
That's a good one.
And then after Adrian, it would be Marilyn Harbaugh. Okay?
My name is, I'm Jane Vanderhoof, and I'm a farmer that live out in Joyce, but I also a year ago bought a house in Port Angeles, and I'm living there half-time, and I'm drinking the water. It wasn't an issue for me, but living on a farm, because we have present water, and that's not fluoridated. And I am against, also like everyone else speaking here tonight, against the fact that you have revoted in fluoride into our water. I'm also disappointed in Patrick Downey, Pat Downey, whom I know and like very much, that you, after being voted in as mayor, that you chose not to vote in Sissy Brook as deputy mayor. It seems like that would have been a natural to get a little more balance in your city council and the mayor and deputy mayor position, so I'm disappointed in that. I'm disappointed in Sherri Kidd, also in her way that she chose to ignore her mathematics around the survey, because a friend of mine, who is a young mother and has two children and lives in Port Angeles, is very against having fluoride in her water, but she was not given a survey, and she did not choose to ask her landlord whether her landlord got her survey. She didn't know, but I think she's probably going to do that if I encourage her, because I think that if you, you should do another survey if you really want to know what the tenants in this community wanted to. A lot of them really don't know about this issue at all, but it was very, if you're not going to even listen to the survey that was done, don't make up excuses for why it wasn't valid, please. That's crazy. I've been in RN all my life. I've been in the medical profession. I have family members who are doctors. And yes, at the last hearing, a lot of doctors stood up and were pro-fluoride. However, some of the articles in the paper that reported that did not even give them any credit. Well, Eloise is one of them. There was also a dentist, I remember, at that hearing that came up and did not want fluoride in the water. He was a dentist. I do not, as a medical person for my whole life, I do not understand why the doctors and the dentists are so pro-this when the, when the facts don't speak for themselves. And, you know, Forest has fluoride, and they have more cavities. There's lots of other reasons why people have cavities in their teeth, not just because they drink or don't drink fluoride. And I hadn't done a lot of research on this until after that first meeting, and then I went home and did some research on it, and the first thing that came up on my computer was how bad fluoride is to put in your water. So I really do wish you would reconsider this and not put fluoride in our water for yet another 10 years. Is that about the contract? 10 years you have to put it in the water? That's absurd.
Okay, first I want to say that my heart is fluttering. I have a couple speakers. Fluoride has occupied a tiny, tiny fraction of my concern.
Excuse me, do we have the speaker's name and the question?
Adrian Tobin, 1110 Grant.
Thank you.
Picking up on some of the points that have been spoken, fluoridation, mass fluoridation is not settled science, despite the number of dentists that come forward, despite the fact that the World Health Organization, the ADA, the CDC clearly all recommend it. It has a long history in the United States. There's a very small portion of the world's population that is fluoridated. There are, it's about 350 million out of the world's population. It's not a universally accepted way of reducing cavities. Other countries have, and cities and towns have rejected fluoridation. State of Israel has. The internet is full of anti-fluoridation, and of course, the internet is full of a lot of bull. That's granted. But there is good science that is counter to the prevailing accepted science for fluoridation, and that has to be acknowledged. Just because people are willing to accept the consensus science doesn't mean that people who reject fluoridation don't have good science behind them. As you may know, there are studies, good studies, peer-reviewed, out of Harvard, for example, that have, that have shown huge problems with child brain development, for example, in China. Are you familiar? I wonder, there's my heart beating here. Are you familiar with this? I'm wondering right now if you, as a city council, are familiar with that particular study from Harvard, from two United States, US researchers that showed that 27, it was a meta-study, showed that 27 out of 28 studies showed a deleterious effect on brain involvement. Is anyone familiar with that study on the council? Would you let me know?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. So there is science. It is not settled science by a long shot, granted that there's a lot of hokey inflammatory anti-fluoridation stuff on the web. There is also good science. Okay, that's one point.
Could you summarize your?
Okay, I wonder how much time I have?
Well, you, I will try to summarize.
All right, I'll finish by, again, this has not been an issue to me. What really brought me here was a conversation over Christmas. A friend of mine said that she was coming. I said, "I'll come and support you." Did a little research, tried to get the best. I noticed a couple things, I'll try to wrap it up in a few seconds here. In the PDN letters to the editor on the web, I didn't go to any of the forums that you folks put up, there are folks that are paid by the ADA that show up across the United States on all the letters to the editor promoting fluoridation. There are, and that should be suspect. I'm concerned that this is a tenure contract. I'm concerned that ex-mayor Kidd said that, "Oh, this isn't a valid survey. This shouldn't affect us because it's not really the will of the people. Not everyone voted. The people that didn't vote clearly didn't care about it." That doesn't pass the smell test. It really doesn't. I don't see how that would pass the smell test to anyone. Elections don't get huge amounts of turnout. It doesn't mean that people are concerned. And finally, I'd like to say, mayor, that if you are truly listening, I invite you to listen to the vast spectrum of Port Angeles residents, and I think you will find that the cases, as has been the case across the United States when this has been on the ballot, that cities more often than not, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, have rejected fluoride. You, it is incumbent upon, I'll just get the last sentence, it is incumbent upon the city council to market and, in the marketplace of ideas, convince the voters. The two Morning in America little brochures we got in the mail, they were very generic. They were to, they weren't convincing. They didn't lay it out. You have to do the work of convincing us. You can't go over the heads of voters, I believe. Sorry for running out. Thank you.
Marilyn Harbaugh, please state your address.
Yes, Marilyn Harbaugh, 312 West Fifth Street. I said in a no-opinion vote, ballot, poll, whatever you want to call it, because I could see both sides of the issue, and I didn't want my vote to meet the determination. However, you all, as a council, did have the choice to make this decision originally on your own, but you chose instead, and I think it was wise, that you chose to put out forums and then to poll your constituents. And having done that, you then gave yourselves each one household "vote," quote-unquote, as did all the rest of us. So I think you forfeited your decision-making process by doing that. And as a result of not following what came back as a majority of the people who responded not wanting fluoride in their water, Sissy said, "I don't care either one way or the other." But you really did undermine the democratic process by not listening. I would encourage you to reconsider and recant and to go with the will of the people. This cost the city considerable money to have this poll. Several parties spent considerable money to send out direct mails to try to influence the choices, but you're thumbing your nose at the will of the people by not, not following what they told you. And more than that, for future years, for future elections, you really have promoted voter apathy, because people will say, "What the heck? You can't fight City Hall. We shouldn't be fighting City Hall. We should be working together." You should be listening to what the people tell you, particularly after you on purpose asked them.
Please.
Please reconsider. Please don't let this have to go to an expensive recall or just drag on and on. Thank you.
So the next person on the list I have, first name is Diana, Diane. I'm unable to read the last name. Oh, Stephanie, yes. Oh, you know, I'm sorry. Stephanie, you are, Stephanie is. And then I said Diane, I, you know who you are. And then following Diane. I don't know how to pronounce the last, the first name.
Elia.
Elia. And I would have you follow my line there if you would, please. Okay, Stephanie.
We're arranging things. Diane Somerville?
Yes.
I live in Yale's Edition, which is outside the city limits. I'm one of those people who gets Port Angeles water but don't get to vote in the elections. So I appreciate your including us in the survey, and I am doubly angry that we got excluded, that our voices were ignored. I'd like to point out something. I've written about this. You may or may not have seen the piece that I did on the history of some of the public health measures in this country. Fluoride was adopted years ago, back in the day when DDT was considered such a healthy thing that kids were sprayed with it in a classroom. We now know what a serious problem that is, and fluoride is in much the same place. We now know what a serious problem it is, but somehow the memory lingers on, and it's time, I think, for us to be a progressive community and move forward into the 21st century and look at what we need to do to be a progressive community. I'm very disappointed that you, as several people have said, put the thumbs in the eye of the people that you asked to vote. That in itself is regressive, and I could say totalitarian and a number of other things like that. I'm hoping that what we can do is to find a way that you will reconsider and again, look at the evidence and back down, because people are so upset that it's not only recall petitions that are being considered and a change in the government of the city, but people are going to be withholding the payment for their water bill and escrow money. People are going to be carrying placards and needing the fairies. They're going to be standing out in the streets. It will be a big mess unless you have the wisdom today to reconsider and say, "We're sorry, we're wrong. We're going to take it back." There's the expensive as well. The building in which the fluoride is processed, the fluoride and arsenic and, excuse me, and lead, thank you. The building itself is dissolving because of the intensity of the acid. You don't have to replace that building to keep on doing this, in addition to the cost of having to continue. And I understand that City Hall here has filtered water, so what's up with that? I don't know whose bad port, but I don't think you are. So let's prepare to most of the citizens of this county.
Please.
Stephanie Tobin, 2345 East Third Avenue, Port Angeles. I also live in Dale's Edition. Most of you know me as clown public guy. I videotape now a little less frequently, but I will be here until this fluoride issue is changed. So council, from Article 1 from the Washington State Constitution, I remind you that all political power is inherent in the people and the governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed and are established to protect and maintain individual rights. As city council, when you took your oath, that included obeying that. So December 15th, city councilmembers attempted to school us, to school us citizens. We received political science lessons on what is a constitutional republic from Councilman Gase. Remember that? We were schooled in statistics from Councilwoman Kidd and Councilman Gase, statistics that were nothing more than political spin, and they did spin. Maybe it was common core math. I'm not sure. And we learned from all four, all four councilmen, including Councilman Collins and Mayor Collins, excuse me, Councilman Collins and Mayor Downey, that their minds were made up before any of the process had begun. Our four city councilpeople missed their position in a way that common people, non-elitists, would never do. They used faulty statistical analysis and authority figures with no real data to justify their positions. The city council did not do right by the people, so they cannot be trusted in the future to represent us. They have demonstrated that their judgment is impaired. The entire fluoride process, cooked up by a dishonest city council to fool the people, truly saddens me. I sit here all the time, and it saddens me. I am so disappointed that the four councilmen think that they, that we are just stupid. The citizens also received mountains of information on water fluoridation, the same as the city council did. If the council received studies, so did the people. The people made up their minds based on their own research and then participated in that advisory poll, but the four city council, councilmen discounted the people's knowledge and their conclusions. The ancient, the actions of the elitist four have proved to be self-serving and a betrayal of our trust. Where is the integrity? I end with one question, maybe it's actually to Mr. Gore. Is the city well insured for health cases arising from water fluoridation? And if you're going to have to write a contract, please make sure there is no penalty for early termination.
My name is Juliana Eno. I live at 505 of West 11th Street. I mean, y'all just keep sticking it to us, don't you? Like, I really thought, like, I mean, wow, I'm shocked. Like, I actually am. I actually had some faith in some of you to be genuinely logically thinking people with a little bit of empathy. So, I mean, why do we even start with the pledge of allegiance, right? I mean, I assume you know what this country's about. I was born on the Fourth of July, so I have a little bit of a patriotic streak in me. So you're telling me that you guys, the four of... So you're telling me that you guys, the four of you, with what college credentials, I think I have more college credentials with an A in welding than y'all do to make medical decisions, or me? Nothing about, like, how can you dictate? Like, here's my idea of health, here's my idea of, like, what I'm doing, you know, like, forget what, you know, you want to live organically and healthy, you live a healthy active lifestyle and avoid, like, over-carbonated sugary beverages, you know, because everybody else in America wants to do this. So we're going to fluoridate your water and we're going to do it with industrial waste byproduct. This is crazy. I am shocked. And so, you know, Dan Gase, I sent you an email calling for your resignation, I need that for all four of you. And, you know, Dan, you said something that kind of like bugged me. You said it would be a sin not to put fluoride in the water and took a picture of what was going on. So I sent you a little email, it's probably about a three or four page or so, about a little bit about the bigger picture and about how our democracy has been co-opted by lobbying organizations for the agrochemical industrial complex that runs, these corporations run every aspect of our lives. The bigger picture is a lot more like benevolent than a lot of us suspected. And that's what this is. This fluoride, it's not a political campaign, it's not a choice, no, it's an industry spending thousands, spending millions of dollars to keep their industry profiting at the price of the people. And we have no say in it. Fifty-seven percent, that's a large margin. I know some of you can't count good. And we said that it doesn't matter, that we have no say in this? Like, what is, this is not democracy, this is fascism.
Tyranny.
Tyranny, yeah, tyranny, fascism. We're going to get medicated with stuff we have no say in it. You know, and it kind of strikes something with my heart because it's the way we treat our elderly and we have no mutual human respect for each other. That's gone out the door anymore. You know, the thing about respect, you have to give respect to get respect. So you don't respect the people, you don't listen to us, like, we don't respect you. Like, the four of you, you're jilt and you're out of here. And we're going to get you recalled and we're going to fight you tooth and nail until you either do.
Can I summarize your question similar as yours?
Yes. Look around you. Your children would rather play with death than they would rather play with life. And that's a sad fact, you know? And you think decisions like the ones you made have no impact on that? Do you think you're making things better or you're not? And resign, Dan Gase, Patrick Downey, Sherry Kidd, and Brad Collins, it's time for you to step down. The people are stepping up.
Just make a motion to change this vote.
I motion to change his vote right now. Do it now.
Are you going to summarize your next question?
Keep fighting. I love everyone out here. Your faces are beautiful and you not lose hope because there are people that do not realize, realize, real lies. And we're real people and we know it's up. Keep fighting.
Okay, the next one on the list is Marty Smith, Mindy Mayfield, and Mark Johnson.
Marilyn Smith, and I did run for city council.
Okay.
That's okay. It's Marilyn Smith, and I live at PO Box 2498 in Port Angeles. And this isn't the first time the city council has done this kind of thing. In the year 2000, there was a vote, actually, there was a survey sent out regarding term limits. At the time, we had a two-term limit. The city council wanted to raise that to three. They sent out a survey and it came back overwhelmingly to not change the term limit. How did the city council vote? They changed it to a three-term limit. The reason? Well, the number of respondents wasn't enough. We were expecting a greater number of people to get back to us. A large group had spoken, but they might have, but they only voted because, they were the only ones that voted, were the ones that were against it. Everyone else was silent, therefore, there must have been four are changing the term limits. These are quotes, by the way, from the Port Angeles website archive. There was a ninety, there was a, can't read it whole, there was a thirty percent return. Seventy percent of the households were neutral. So it was up to the council to decide. Nothing's changed. What's happened since the year 2000, our town has eroded.
End in Portland.
Yep. So this is how the city council operated historically. It's the football from, Lucy pulled the football out from Charlie Brown's foot again. Thank you. So I spent the last couple of weeks looking for one quote that would sum up how I felt after that meeting. And the best I could come up with was the Billy Madison movie from 1995. It was, and I'm quoting Mr. Oblaski, the principal, and I'm actually directing this mostly at you, Sherry. What you just said is one of the most insanely idiotic things I have ever heard. At no point in your rambling, incoherent response were you even close to anything that could be considered a rational thought. Everyone in this room is now dumber for having listened to it. I award you no points and may God have mercy on your soul.
Mindy Mayfield, 3752 of Hill Circle, Port Angeles. Fluoride vote. I think it was all about freedom. The freedom to make a choice. Four of you came down on the side of tyranny. You were profoundly disrespectful to everybody who voted. You gave all the power to the people who didn't even vote at all. You four, in your elitist arrogance, decided, you knew the private thoughts of all those people who didn't vote, even though you didn't talk to a single one of them. And you twisted those silent people's wishes into whatever you wanted them to be. You twisted their wishes into your own secret goals. That's tyranny.
Mark Johnson, Smart Drive, Port Angeles. How much is this contract going to cost over the course of about 10 years?
Two hundred K.
Two hundred thousand?
At least.
Practically speaking, well, I don't want to get anybody mad here, but I'm actually a pro-fluoride. A pro-fluoride in the sense that there's a amount that kids can take for a dollar a year, for a dollar a year, through the school or through the health services here. Kids, for a dollar a year, can put it in, they in for a minute, spit it out. If, if our population reflects the rest of the US population, perhaps seventeen percent of the kids in Port Angeles do not have access to a dentist. That's about four hundred between ages of six and sixteen. That time where kids need strong teeth to develop. That's about $400 a year versus $200,000. How many potholes can I fill? How many police cars can be fixed? Practically speaking, $400 a year versus $200,000 over the course of 10. Practically speaking, that's all.
The last two names on this list is Ron Jones and Jared Dixon.
Also, I signed that announcement.
I'm only going by the ones that have circled yes.
You circled it for me? Because I'm sorry.
This is the way it has always been done. There's a list here that says, "Please to speak." There's a yes and there's a no. I go by the yeses and it's been procedure for winners. Having said that, I've given the opportunity for those that have circled yes. There's a second public commentary. And when these two gentlemen speak, I will ask a question. Are there others who have not had an opportunity to speak who care? Now, I will ask that question. This is the procedure we have gone as councilmen. If you wanted to have spoken in the first place, you needed to have circled yes.
You need to vote.
One, two, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, mayor. That last explanation is ludicrous. I mean, just ask them if they want to speak.
I will.
Now, you know, last meeting, I tried to give you a rational explanation where the American Academy of Pediatrics told you that you should not give people un-specialized treatment or treatment that isn't geared towards individual people, but you ignored that. I invite you to go back and read that letter. The American Academy of Pediatrics is just above the clock here. The primary message throughout that poster is that you have to have individualized treatment. Now, you've just shut down that possibility for everyone in Port Angeles. But that's water on the brink, maybe, but I hope you reconsider. Now, Pat, at Lake Crest Plaza, you told me that you had made up your mind and you had to change. This isn't going to go away, Pat, and you need to listen to these people. You need to change your mind. And Brad Collins needs to change his mind. I have no hope for Mr. Gas, Mr. Miss Kidd. I've been around politicians in this time for a while, and this is not going to help Port Angeles at all, and it's not going to go away.
Ron, would you stay closer to the mic?
Okay. So anyway, I want to get to the J here. And a lot of people have ridiculed your mathematics, and I don't think, it's difficult to not ridicule it enough. You know, I have a lot of math in my undergraduate degree. Trigonometry, differential equations, set theory, you know, you name it, I have it. But I missed something really important, and it's called mathematics. And that's short for P-A mathematics. And you know, you can do a lot with mathematics. You can change a fifty-seven to twenty-one percent vote against fluoride into a seventy-five to twenty-five percent vote fluoride. And it's going to make this town look ridiculous. Now, that type of mathematics is contagious because I just read in the paper the other day, there's some guy trying to collect pledges. And he had a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars pledged, and he ended up getting fifty-five thousand, and he said that was fifty percent. Now, he got that way by subtracting seventy-five right off the top from a hundred and eighty-five and then having fifty-five out of a hundred and ten. You know, that's about as bad a stretch as you guys came up with. And Mr. Gas is associated with that effort, so maybe that's why they got combined. But anyway, it's really bad. It's really bad for that to happen. And aside from the ridiculous math that Port Angeles is now known for, they're known for giving, you know, and kids listen to that. And just mathematically, they listen to that, and they'll be doing that same mental gymnastics throughout their life. But also, it's a terrible civics lesson for these kids. Not only are they told to take poor results and just totally trash them, come up with whatever reason you want to come up with, but they're told to just scoff at democracy. And that is the real takeaway that you guys need to pay attention to. It's more important for these kids to get some real lessons in how democracy can work. That last meeting, you, when you were preparing to present the mayor's outgoing trophies, you said, you welcomed everybody to this council member to witness democracy. And you can replay that, and those are your exact words. That is just ludicrous because that was the worst example of bad democracy I've seen here. So anyway, this is the real importance for these kids to learn. Fluoride can be taken care of other ways if it's if necessary, a lot cheaper ways, as this one person just pointed out. And I want to, I want to end by emphasizing something that Alvin Kamala said. It is the responsibility of the medical community to convince their patients that they should take a certain medicine. Despite spending thousands and thousands of dollars in mailing out glossy posters before this vote, the patients of this medical community did not buy their arguments. And just as they can't go behind their patients' back in other ways and direct other people to give them medicine, they shouldn't have been able to come to you and say, "We'll give it to them anyway, whether they want it or not." You've got to undo this opinion, this decision path. It's within your power. Thank you.
Jared Dixon, 1036 Olympus Avenue. I spoke back in 2000 to the OMC board at the hospital when they were debating on your behalf whether they should have it here in the city back then. Is that the last time I was at a podium for on this issue? I'm not going to bring up stats that you've all heard, be a hold on that. But a lot of reasons why many of you selected to vote to keep having it is because you wanted to look out for the people that didn't vote and Mynskens in the area that maybe or maybe not have a voice. But I got a girlfriend here, and she's in the dental industry here, and she reminded me that we have kids here in the schools district. Smile Mobile, that beautiful house on wheels that comes and gives free dental care to the school district kids twice a year. This is assuming you want to make sure the kids are taken care of. There are already groups and organizations that oversee making sure the kids or the families that can't afford dental care. There's already groups out there, does not need to be a civic government to oversee that. People want to, if you want to help out the kids, make sure they get their fluoride. I understand your concern there. Me personally, I'm not a fluoride and payer of it, just for record. Want to? That's fine. Point is, you don't get to put it in the water and force me to drink it, but I have to pay for it soon. Point is, you don't get to put it in the water and force me to drink it, but I have to pay for it. It will consume. I am now forced to buy bottled water, waiting for some attorney to call up and get ahold of a group here and say, "Who wants to petition the city to pay our water bill, our own bottled water bill?" I spend 40 bucks a month on it. This is me buying my own drinking water. There's so many opportunities where the kids can get their dental care, so I'm not going to go with that. I don't, I mean, that reasoning that for you to keep the fluoridation in the water, that doesn't stand with me. I've seen it. I mean, I see the Smile Mobile, there's other dentists, and there's other groups that are taking care of the kids that cannot afford dental care. And then number two, we can save a buttload of money. You can get rid of this fluoridated tank. Shucks. You can make us all happy right now by getting rid of fluoridation in the water. You can accomplish the fluoride four's mission by getting the less fortunate having their fluoride, by handing out samples here in the parking lot on Saturday afternoons with the money that you've saved from fluoridating the water. I'll even volunteer for Saturday handouts. I'll have that fluoride. Both groups would be happy. No fluoridated water, and the people less fortunate will be able to get the fluoride. Contemplate that. It's really, I mean, it's not too hard to really put into place. And then I want to understand. If I, say that again?
Can you please summarize your?
Yes. The last meeting I attended, and I think Sheri said something to the effect of that you guys have an obligation as a council to oversee the health and welfare of the citizens. I really, I have a hard time with that, because where does that bound, where's the boundary on that in your mind? Obviously, I'm not going to get an answer today. You need to really think of that. If you're really thinking that mass fluoridation of water, passing it out, if you really feel that that's your responsibility, I think that's unethical, not moral, and I don't think it's your place to put fluoride in my home when I don't deserve it. I don't need it. If I need fluoride, I know where to go find it. Thanks.
I have received two additional names on the list, Susan Hilton Hinton and Jesse Farmer.
My name is Susan Hinton. My address is 318 West East Street, Port Angeles, Washington. This isn't my first time standing here. It's not my first time speaking out about fluoride. Also, in 2000, while I was pregnant with my fourth child, I asked you not to poison my children. I came with my 11-year-old child when he was in sixth grade, Sion Davis. He wrote a letter speaking out against fluoridation in the water because of what it was doing to the joints in his body, but you still didn't listen. Honestly, in this exact room, one of you councilmen, women, made a sworn vow to make sure that he wouldn't be harmed in his life. For the first time, I really learned not to put faith in a human being who's a politician. I made a judgment on a person who I saw on Sunday mornings, and it breaks my heart, because that judgment is now on me. I stand here as a mother of eight children, and I once again ask you not to poison them. I have a child who's now 17 years old and struggling in his life, in his own ways, because of his thyroid. He hasn't even got to graduate high school yet. Now he's just trying to figure out how to deal with the motions that come with the thyroid problem. We trust our community. I am trying to teach my children that their vote matters, and where it matters most is in your hometown, your city council. These are your people. These are your neighbors, the people who have helped invest in you, helped to make sure you got college scholarships. These are the people who helped to raise you, patted you on the head on Sunday mornings, and gave you candy. This is what I tell my children. These people love you. We can never leave this community. We're invested in it because they're invested in us. Nowhere else. I'm a traveler, a chipseer, never had a home. I chose Port Angeles 18 years ago to be my roots, my foundation, the place I called my hometown for my children and myself for the first time in my life. It is Port Angeles, and I truly believe that. And today, with my people, I stand against your tyrannies. Either get the F out of our water or get the F out of your state.
Jesse Farmer, Port Angeles. I'm not gonna, I'll keep this brief, but I'm not gonna try to reason with you. We all know who we're dealing with here. Everybody does. I just don't wish to get up there and pretend like you're fighting for kids or something, or you're standing against. You're standing against the people of Port Angeles. You don't care about kids any more than the dentists that don't take Medicaid, that haven't abandoned you to twisting the wind yet. And you know, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of people, they want to recall you, they want to change the form of government. The action is going to keep coming, keep coming. Some people just want to harass you. You've asked us to come at you one at a time. I think a lot of people are gonna. We're also going to come at you as a mom, and it's growing. This is growing. There's as many people here as there was at the last meeting with zero pro, maybe like one or two, pro-fluoride supporters. This is going to continue, and it's up to you whether you want to deal with it. This is going to be part of your business life. This is going to be part of your personal life. Until you either flip on this decision, although I think it's too late for some of you. I think your political careers are over. You might sit in those seats until the next election, but you're gone after that. And after that, we will end the practice of water fluoridation in Port Angeles. Thank you.
I've also received the name of Benjamin Gross.
Hello, 936 West 11th Street. This is going to be really brief, and I've never done this before, so forgive me, my don't-taking method. I'm curious to ask if any of the proponents for water fluoridation in this area, I'm wondering, would you deem this a medical issue or a healthcare issue?
I don't know.
Anybody in the city council?
Typically, during a public commentary period, you do not respond. It's not intended to be that kind of discussion.
Okay.
But would you make your target rate contact anyone of the individual assets?
Okay. Other than that, am I allowed to ask of anybody in the audience who would be pro-fluoride? As far as I would actually like to ask a dentist or a medical doctor to respond to this question, if anybody could put a hand up.
I don't know if there's a doctor in the audience.
Okay, okay.
It is not intended, this question.
Okay, all right. I'll put my little short summarization. Anybody finishing medical school has to agree and swear the Hippocratic oath, and there are also numerous federal laws regarding patient rights. One of the ones that's universal state by state in the entire country is right to, sorry, inform consent. And I don't believe that anybody here knows any sign that you've been given informed consent by the majority of the people. And if you want to deem this a healthcare issue, I don't believe that you're doing it right, but that would be all.
I wanted to ask now if there's anybody else who has not had an opportunity to speak at this portion of our meeting. I would extend this portion of the meeting for a few minutes to extend that opportunity to you right now. And I will remind you that we have, and I'm not a part of our agenda tonight, a second public commentary period. You may also have that opportunity. So for a few more minutes, so that we can try to give everybody an opportunity to share with us. I would like to, please come forward, state your name, your address, and.
By the way, I signed up, I was about two, number eight in the list, but evidently you said I didn't say yes.
What is your name?
I'm Sarah Lee O'Connor. Can you hear me? I live on Mount Pleasant Road in Port Angeles.
Okay, you're, I will, and I want to respond to your question. You're on the list between Diane Center and.
I cannot hear you. I'm hard of hearing, and your microphones aren't worth a darn, so anyway.
Sarah Lee, you are on the list. You are about to number 10 or so. On the section where it says, "Plan to speak," you circled neither yes nor no.
Obviously, Mr. Downey, I did not sign up with the idea of not speaking.
Well, I can make that sense. Not when there's nothing checked. You're taking the equal time. Please continue.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Very honestly, I was shocked at the way you came up with your determination of a mayor. You know, I didn't realize that that's the way it's done here, and the whole idea of democracy is kind of a sham right up here. I'm disgusted. I'm going to try to keep my language halfway civil, as much as I'd like to use a few words that probably wouldn't be acceptable. I think that all of you people made the decision to add fluoride when all of people didn't want it, many of the people didn't want it. I do not believe that if any of you had to take a test right today on all of these fluoride issues, if you'd ever read Dr. Kaelin's, all of the treatises that she has written about fluoride, and many of the other scientific studies, you couldn't, if you had any intelligence at all, you couldn't have voted to put fluoride in the water. It's just impossible. And I'm wondering about the intelligence of people who are sitting on our council. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I own a lot of real estate, thank God, but I don't have to drink your water because I live out in the country. But I have nine properties, nine homes in Port Angeles, and those people have to drink your water. And now, I don't believe that I should have to pay for the water in those nine properties in Port Angeles because they're not getting pure water. What do you think? Well, you can't answer me. And Mr. Bass, I have to say, this reflects on Colwell Banker. I just closed two properties with your companies, and I didn't realize that you were, you had voted like you did. And now I'm disgusted. So you have reflected also on your company in your decision.
That's great on that, Sarah Lee. First, I don't own Colwell Banker.
I know you don't.
I am a commission salesperson, and in this process, I've had my business attacked.
I thought, I thought they, I thought.
I'll stand.
I will say that I also was a real estate broker and an owner of a company. And if I'd had an agent who had influence like you have in a community, I would have been shocked and very, very unhappy if one of my agents would vote against the will of the people. I hope that all of you will reverse your decisions, will change your vote for fluoride. I hope that you're smart enough to do that. That's all I have to say.
Let's extend the opportunity to just two more people following Dan Bieda. I have a total of three additional people who certainly need to go to the rest of the agenda. There's a second opportunity tonight. I think we have been very generous in providing Dan with this opportunity.
Mayor, I'm Dan Bieda. I'm on 207 Walcott Street here in Port Angeles. Many of you, and I know the city council heard me speak many times, against fluoride. I'm Dan Bieda. I'm on 207 Walcott Street here in Port Angeles. I've been there many times speaking against fluoride. Not just about the science part. I'm not a scientist, but I'm against it on those bases also from my own opinion. The city council's heard me speak many times. It's about the rights of the people. I'm damn proud of the people in this city because they spoke up. I'm ashamed of our city council that ignored them with arrogance. I have other words to describe it, but many of those of you have used it already. I think the smartest thing the city council can do to get the trust of the people whom they are supposed to represent is reverse that bad decision and do away with fluoride. If that doesn't happen, I believe the people will reverse the elections, let recall or achieve the city government, and get a city council that will represent the will of the people.
Hi, my name's Rebecca. My name is Fran. So I kind of just wanted to address kind of some of the things like what some people were speaking, you know, like there's the Smile Mobile Clinic. I'm a low-income mom. I get Medicaid. Medicaid now accepts, I can get dental. I can get free dental care, but no dentist except Medicaid here in the area. The only clinic out of the entire peninsula that accepts Medicaid is C Mar Dental Clinic. And I just, like, if anyone needs free dental care, if you have Medicaid, go to C Mar. You've got the Smile Mobile Clinic. You've got the Vemo Clinic. Yeah, there's great programs out there that help. I just kind of wanted to say that to anyone struggling to get help with dental care. Also, I wish I could just say that the greatest insult to the people was mass medicating them without their consent. But what I find an even greater insult to the people, to the voters, is instead of actually counting the people who took the time out of their day, got up there, you know, rear ends and voted, I mean, lack a better term, I, you know. I just find it insulting, instead of actually counting the people who took the time out of their day to vote, you're counting the people who did not vote. It's an absolute betrayal in the hearts of the voters and the community and the people who voted. I understand, you know, I understand you guys have reputation to uphold, some of you have businesses. And, you know, you're, Dan Bass, you know, you're saying your business is being attacked. Your business will continue to be attacked. It will be continuing. I understand that. Some of you have selfish special interests, you know, you've got your businesses, whatever your. I just find it absolutely ridiculous that Sheri Kidd thinks it's okay to count the people who did not vote. Patrick Downey, if you want respect, respect the citizens. Respect the majority of citizens who take the time to, who actually care what they're drinking in their water. I just, I'm just wondering, like, how are you even fit to be mayor? I mean, you don't, you nominated Sissy Kidd. I mean, you don't even know your. I mean, you don't, you nominated Sissy Kid, I mean, you don't even know you're councilor. Shari Kid. No, she, he called him, she, no, she, no, she, whatever. I don't even know anymore, I'm all, I'm all confused, whatever.
Do you want me to summarize your remarks?
Yeah, I'm summarizing, I'm summarizing. Shari Kid, I mean, how are you fit to be deputy mayor? I mean, you're gonna count the people who now vote. I mean, we can end this now, but it's up to the council today. I mean, you can end fluoride today. But if not, then we, the people, will recall the pro-fluoride politicians. You know, a lot of dentists that spoke here for fluoride, you know, have their own special interests. You know, they make money on selling fluoride treatments, drops and supplements. But there is even a dentist here that spoke against fluoride. But, you know, we're not asking you to agree with us, but just to please respect us. And I kinda, I wanted to, um... Okay, and because of, I, I wanted to say one more thing. I've just seen a lot of incompetence here, so I kinda wanna, uh, read the definition of tyranny here. Uh, it's cruel and unfair treatment by people with power over others. A government in which all power belongs to one person. The rule or authority of a tyrant. So, that's kinda what sums it up, just kinda wanted to remind you that, um, that's what tyranny means, and, um, I hope you guys reconsider your guys' vote, um, and fluoridation. Thank you.
That will conclude this portion of the meeting.
One more! Let them talk.
There are one additional person.
Peter.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. First of all, I could imagine you all for your election. However, from what I heard today, and maybe short-lived, but the thing is, folks, I, I ran for office several times. Several, and by the way, Peter Ripley, 114 East Sixth Street, Port Angeles. I had said this many times during my previous attempts to run for office, that this issue will not die unless it's an eight, eight, eight valid measure. A valid measure, but this should have been done. I knew this was gonna happen, I knew it. I read it, I wrote about it in my news blog several times. And Mr. Whiteman, I have to agree with you on this one, on this little issue, that the will of people should be upheld. That is, no, I may disagree with Mr. Whiteman on a lot of issues, but that one there, I agree with Mr. Whiteman on that whole argument. The thing with this here people, that this whole, you know, a lot of people who are low-income, who live in subsidized houses, they get their water bill paid for by the housing authority, which I live in. So we didn't get to vote in that election, in that little straw poll. And unfortunately, it was unbound, led eating the way to a possible ignoring, yeah, the, the outcome, which happened. No one wanted to listen then, now did they? And now are you listening now? Thing is, you have a chance to change things for the better. I would suggest you all consider that. The next time someone runs for office, thank you very much.
That concludes this portion of our meeting, and I'm Mr. Connor. Uh, I'm the pastor of the council, would you like to have a short break before we proceed on agenda? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is I D, A Island's agenda. Any of you who have packed a place on our agenda, or future agendas, ask them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead, Councilmember Collins.
Um, I would like this, at, at the last meeting, we talked about, um, having, uh, a discussion about, uh, our continued participation in the EDC for 2016. And I'd like to put that on the January 19th meeting agenda. And my reasoning is that, uh, I strongly support the Sustainable Long Range Financial Plan, prioritizing policies in my county to meet for more general fund resources for public safety activities, uh, which are ever increasing demands for services. And I believe the best way to increase the general fund resources is to grow the local economy, particularly by creating new jobs through new private businesses and new expansion of current businesses. And I believe the best way to create those new jobs is by continuing to support the activities of EDC. And therefore, I'd like us to direct the staff to bring funding alternatives, uh, for the city to continue to participate in EDC 2016, uh, for action at our next, uh, meeting.
Okay.
Another report, Ben.
I would support that also, uh, Brad, I was curious, do you have any bottom ups in mind?
Uh, yes, I discussed the Bill Greenwood, who would be, uh, desire to continue at the levels which we have been providing, which is the $15,000 a year. But I would leave it up to the staff and back to alternatives, which might not come out of general fund, just, uh, alternatives from the general fund.
Guys will need paper, looking into that.
Um, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'd like to, uh, get another item on today's agenda, and I'd actually like it to be immediately following, I'd be off of this microphone. I'd like to bring up the discussion of fluoride.
Sure, I would support that.
I would support that.
We can't hear you, Shari. We can't hear you.
Oh wait, she needs you.
I believe she, and, and she would not want to have it tonight. So, I would encourage us to have some further discussion, and I would not recommend it to you tonight. I'm willing to entertain that going to our, uh, future agenda, even our next meeting. I just think this is so emotionally charged. And I have very confidence to say people, now please, this is a two-way conversation. If you could, uh, be willing and Sissy to have this be put on our agenda on the January 16th, that we might, uh, uh, further discuss it, I would, I would support that. I think it's important that we consult with, uh, our city attorney and, and others that can give to us a comprehensive list of options that may be available to this council for any potential consideration or reconsideration. I just prefer that it not be tonight, I just don't, uh, I think we need to be, uh...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
So that would be my quick point of order.
Uh, Mr. Board, in the past, you've indicated to me that you're a fellow member under Robert's rules of order. Can you respond to, uh, necessary majority in order for this council to bring an item forward on the agenda?
To add an item to the agenda requires four votes. Right here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Um, I would be very willing to, uh, sit with, uh, council member Brooke, if she's willing to go over some of the ideas that, uh, presented, uh, in the, before our next meeting, if she's willing to do that. Of course, this, I think, is scheduled to be determined in the next week.
Sure, just, who's I, I guess I missed, what would be, what would be needed?
There would be an ad hoc committee of you and me, and, uh, potentially some members of the public, the public issues in a race tonight.
But I think that, you know, if there's gonna be more folks who really wanna talk about this, and if it has to happen at, at the next meeting, I would be okay with that as well.
All right, um, following the counsel of our city attorney, I'm gonna poll, uh, the members of that council who are live or in by, uh, phone, uh, your desire, how we approach this request on the part of our fellow member of council. So I'll start with, uh, council member Mayor, would you, um, would you, I think I understood you seem to like to continue, Mr. Mayor, tonight?
Yes.
Was that a consideration, did you want?
I'd like to consider it tonight.
Okay, uh, council member Kid is requesting that we move it to this discussion to our next meeting. I would similarly, I would similarly do so, as I stated before, at least, than I...
Yes, I'd be happy to discuss this further, but as with nearly every topic that we've attempted to make a knee-jerk reaction based on immediate, uh, I, uh... So, the crowd doesn't seem to want to allow us to discuss it at the next meeting, so, but, uh, that's my decision. I'm happy with discussing it again at the next meeting.
And, uh, for those of iPhone, Brad, what would your preference be?
Um, my preference is to, for Sissy and I, and, you know, I'm not really prepared to discuss it tonight.
Okay, and Sissy, please.
Um, I would be willing to discuss it tonight, or...
I think the question was, um, would it be tonight, or would you be willing to wait until our next meeting?
Um, the answer would be yes to both of those.
So, city clerk, what was the vote?
My understanding is council agreed by majority to add a discussion on fluoridation to the next council meeting.
All right, that shall be the decision. Mr. Lord, you concur with what you did?
I could agree with the city clerk's opinion, yes.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to have the official recorded, uh, vote count for the EDC discussion at our next council meeting. The E, the EDC, uh, discussion at our next scheduled council meeting. I'm not clear that we'll receive the majority necessary as fluoride did previously.
Okay, you understand, now, next meeting, we are not, we are going to, as a part of our agenda, discuss fluoride, and we are going to discuss the, uh, re-upping the membership at the EDC as requested by Mr. Collins.
And I ask for a vote count, please, on the EDC.
Sure.
Yes.
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 No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and I would say yes, because I think it's always, um, a good thing to discuss things. I mean, I, and I also don't agree with giving them more money, but I do think that we should discuss it.
Brad?
I would go with yes.
Okay, so, thank you.
So the vote is this one?
Yes, um, okay, uh, next on our agenda is Mayor.
Come here.
Uh, can I ask for a break, please, for 10 minutes?
Yes. And we will close, uh, the meeting, we'll, we'll, wait for, you know, 7:15. I think, uh, Sissy and Brad still with us?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good. All right, um, the first order of business, actually, before we proceed to the consensus agenda, we have to do a little, I guess, you know, housekeeping or, in some way or another to say this. We, we have had an election, uh, mayor, and that will, uh, we need to sort of reseat ourselves, as it were, in order that we, for Sissy and Brad are not here, and will try to do our best with this, but just the motive, you know, the drawing. So, uh, city clerk has an idea what we, how we should be seated at following our election or even the meeting, so I'm gonna invite Jennifer to guide us in a little bit. I'm gonna move to my left, and then work, and then, uh... Shari, I think stay where you are, you can move to her left, so, and, then the balance of it, of the group, and then speak louder so Sissy and Brad can remember what we're doing at our next meeting. We're gonna reseat some of the most of you, by, by position, is that...
Well, if, if only you...
Okay, that, or, or is it that, up to us? So we can do it either systematic, like, one, two, three, four, or, or we can just stay where we are.
I would actually vote for a change of scenery, it's always nice.
So Sissy, I think I hear what she said.
I said that I would vote for a change of scenery, because it's always nice to have a different perspective and...
So why don't we backseat it then?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit in the middle here. Sissy, you can stay where you are, if you wish.
Well, so if the council wants to move our, our suggestion, the only suggestion is that we could put you in order, um, according to your seats. You each have a, a position, number one, two, three, and I can, I can get that situated for you before the lead, and that's really just how I view that.
That sounds fine.
I know that Lee will be, let's just have a sigh of relief, because I have the propensity to spill my water.
Okay, I do have one land item that I need to raise to council's attention.
Yes.
Uh, we have, it would be under J, which actually would be right between G and K on your agenda, so you write up your purpose is not requiring health care and he finds its endoscope repairs. Again, the title would be endoscope repairs, and then on your dice will have a, a detailed description of that since it's a land item, by headquarters. And that's all.
Okay, um, all right, and Lee on our agenda is a consent agenda, as I remember, you, fluoride, you read it, uh, and Sherry, I haven't been taken off the agenda just a moment, so please, just ask.
Um, yes, I get, I'm just brief because I can't vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to comment to number three, Waterfront Development Phase 2B project. Um, I was actually watching the new waterfront today, it is so beautiful, I'm so grateful for all the hard years of hard work that's gone into this. Thank you, Mr. West, and council, and P D Forward Committee. Uh, we know the sod is in, the, all the land digging's in, the beautiful markers along the trail, and, um, I believe last month, uh, Eagle Scout project, they, they painted the, the viewing tower, it looks fabulous. And so I just encourage everyone, come down to your waterfront. We have a beautiful waterfront, the city's so proud of it. So I just wanted to comment what a, what a wonderful thing it is, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, item number three for the expenditure approval. I'd like to point out that I'm an employee of Birkenberg Construction, they're on the expenditure approval list. I'm a salaried employee, I have nothing to gain from this. I am a salaried employee, I have nothing to gain from this, it is a final payment of a pre-existing contract, and there are retainings this day and year.
Do you need a point of order? I think Mr. Meredith should step down for that.
Yes, I'm hoping you can do that, Sissy, can you?
Could Mr. Bor...
Mr. Meredith, talking to you about this earlier, and this contract, the contract itself was approved by the board of directors of the council, and he had a most interest only in the approval of the contract itself, not in the final, not in the final payment. And so, it is of course always the council members' option to step down if it feels like there's conflict, but there is no public standing.
Point of order?
Yes.
I don't know what to vote on, it should be, but if Mr. Meredith's decision would be decided to vote on it, it would be extremely appropriate.
What is the consensus of Mr. Mayor in terms of Mr. Meredith's participation in this?
We just normally recuse ourselves if there's any appearance.
The only appearance of connection is that I'm a salaried employee, I have no financial gain from the final payment of a contract that I assume the city would not be paying on, that had not been fulfilled.
And I would agree with Mr. Meredith in saying that had it been beforehand, then I could see that, you know, you, that kind of, you know, stay away from it. But on this one, because the contract was awarded beforehand, I don't see any real conflict of interest, you stated what's going on, so, I would like to vote.
Okay, I believe, I believe it's Councilmember Meredith's sole decision on this. All right, please.
Yeah, the good counsel, Mr. Bor said it's still okay from the city's perspective, and I've had similar situations, I give full disclosure. I don't see any reason why you couldn't participate and vote on that.
And Mr. Meredith, I agree with that, I respect and appreciate your followings on this, okay? Now, Sissy, you brought up the Amicus brief portion of the consent agenda. Mr. Lord, you tell me how you would have Sissy handle this, but...
Well, you'd call for a vote on first four items of the consent agenda, and Sissy can vote on all those, and then separately vote on the item number five.
And to the public, to make for the public to know, I just want the morale up all time, and that's where my conflict of interest is placed.
Okay, let's, maybe consent agenda, as is the city council minutes of December 1st, 2015, and December 15th, 2015. Number two, the expenditure approval list from December 5th, 2015, to December 18th, 2015, and you have $1,423,929.42. Item number three, the waterfront development phase 2B, parentheses, O, the Olympic Discovery Trail, less than the parentheses, project number BR02-2003, final acceptance. Number four, the remedial action grant, accept the grant.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved we accept the consent agenda, Fred.
Second.
Okay, motion has been reported, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 We also have item number five on the consent agenda, the Amicus...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did everyone vote aye? I can't tell.
Yes. And we have a motion to pass, it was passed in Amicus. Item number five on the consent agenda is an Amicus brief to approve the participation of the city of Port Angeles.
I'm happy to have a motion on that, to approve and authorize the city to join in, Amicus brief being prepared by Georgia Pacific.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I change?
All right. I want to extend our appreciation to both Brad Collins and Sissy Brook for their staying up late. Where they are, they're on the East Coast side, both of them, because we really appreciate both of you for hanging in here. Okay, item G, for the not required public carriages. Dan, would you like to speak into this?
That would be Nathan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to present item municipal code amendment 15-01, which is a cottage overlay zone, as well as amendments to Port Angeles Municipal Code in support of smaller housing in the community, including tiny houses. At this time, this is the second reading of consideration for both of these ordinances. The first reading was conducted on December 15th. A detailed public hearing was held at the Planning Commission level in November of last year. The Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval for these ordinances. Additionally, I would note that several council members, including Councilmember Pro, Councilmember Collins, and Councilmember Gates, have provided some very helpful suggestions as far as corrections to the ordinance. And I do want to point out two corrections to city council this evening. To begin, on page G9 of your packet, it should be pointed out that there is a strike through of the word "more" in the last paragraph on page G9. That should in fact remain as the word "less", so I would like that correction to be made. Additionally, on page G21 of your council packet, I would note that the changes shown in paragraph C at the very bottom of page G21, those changes should also be struck from the proposed ordinance, and that those were also incorrect changes as proposed. Other than that, we did incorporate all the changes the city council requested at the last council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, and again, appreciate council's support and assistance with these particular ordinances. I would note, Mr. Mayor, it would be important to change recommendation 2 of the staff memo, so that it notes, following the second reading, adopt the ordinance as modified on page G9 and G21, making amendments to Title 17 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code as listed.
All right, let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, making changes incorporating air exemper, comma, reduce setbacks for accessory residential units, comma, and make minor amendments to terminology and word usage, were consistent in Title 17, Chapter 17.01, 17.08, 17.10, 17.11, 17.12, 17.13, 17.14, 17.15, 17.17, 17.18, 17.19, 17.21, 17.22, 17.23, 17.24, 17.25, 17.31, 17.34, 17.35, 17.37, 17.24, 17.45, 17.52, 17.95, and 17.96 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code, all these are related as only, and further modified as part of our discussion this evening.
Second motion, Fred?
Who made the motion? I thought you said second.
I did second the motion.
You made the...
I just read the motion.
We just read the ordinance.
Only the motion, so he...
I made the motion, following the second reading, adopt the ordinance establishing a cottage housing development overlay, and number two, following the second reading, adopt the ordinance as modified in page G9 and G21, making amendments to Title 17 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code.
Oh, sorry.
It has been moved and seconded. I call for that question, or any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
But I, with that, I'm going to ask that, if there's any further discussion moving forward, we are voting on that motion, so we can take the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, what I can thank, staff, as well as the other council members that have been involved with this. This is something I've actually pushed on, Nathan, for quite a number of months. I'm glad we're getting it out to the people, from what I've learned from being on council. We've done housing studies that show what our housing costs are. That my idea of this moving forward is it's going to provide lower housing costs to X amount of people. So, I look at it for growth purpose, I look at it for monthly law apartment purpose. I think we're going to add more users to our utilities. We are faced with additional utility costs increasing, coming up. But if we can lessen that by spreading it out more to a bigger customer base, I guess I think this is headed in the right direction, and again, kudos to staff and council members, and I'll be fully supported in this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did notice that there's a correction on G3 as well, with the same issue of density that "more" versus "less", and it should be "more" on G3 as well as G9. If this motion and the second would accept that, I think that's appropriate.
Is that acceptable to them?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine with me, as long as Nathan concurs.
That is correct.
Okay. And don't we have, staff have leeway for clarifying errors on this kind of stuff?
I would say that would be, just because the definition of "more" versus "less" would be opposite, actually, it'd be a good idea to get that clarification.
For the public record, appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow up what Councilmember Wyman said, and thank him for bringing this to our council's attention, and giving us this opportunity, and staff did excellent work on it, and the way the council members added and helped it, to help shape it, I really, and then it went to the Planning Commission and was discussed thoroughly and passed unanimously. I really appreciate the process, so, thank you, Councilmember Wyman, and thank you all for the work on this. I say, Fred.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a point? All right, we have a motion on the table, and ordered for the second hearing for the discussion, so I will ask, call for the question, all those in favor of the motion as stipulated, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have added to the agenda, item J.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify that, I believe there were two ordinances, and we need to make sure we do take action on both of those. So, there were two recommendations, going back, I apologize, to page E47, sorry, one more try.
I need to find the numbers.
The second ordinance begins on page G38.
Okay, the other ordinance, Mr. Nathan wants to refer to is, as well as the ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, revising Title 17 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, 17.16, cottage housing development overlay zone. So, we need to, and then any discussion items or comments about this section of the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, would we adopt the ordinance as said?
Need a second?
Second.
Was that, we read?
I did. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have added to the agenda J, adsense repairs.
Before we start, Mr. Mayor, a question for Bor. This is a job Brooklyn Bridge Construction has worked on in the past. I assume they are going to, I do not know for sure, but assume they're going to be a fitter on this job? Is this something I can be involved in?
Yes, I think the reason for that is, that you would not be able to approve a contract that is awarded to Brooklyn Bridge, so that you could not participate in that. The action denied is not that, the action denied is essentially to make an agreement with Nippon Engineering, the Army Corps of Engineers. So, this, the action denied, I don't think you can include your employer.
All right, I'll take it from there. So, during the month of December, we have some very high tides and some heavy winds from the west, which have damaged the revetment slash rock armoring on the outside of Easethook in the vicinity of Nippon Bay Bridge. We discovered this over the holidays. We've done site visits, both the city engineering in Nippon, and we've had the Army Corps of Engineers out there also to do analysis. By public law, the Army Corps of Engineers is responsible for maintaining the revetment on the outside of Easethook. So, we need to, they will be the contract agent for any repairs that are made to that area. Well, we have, in your packet with the memo are some photographs of the areas of concern. The large armored boulders that should be there are no longer there, so you have small cobbles. The worry is if we have another high tide with western storms, which we do have during the winter time, those cobbles would be washed out and start doing damage to Nippon and the rest of Easethook and that area. So, the Army Corps is very, very anxious to get this, get on this right away. They'd like to move forward in the next two weeks, where there's some title, some benefits of title in those weeks. They would like to get this work done before any new storms come in, and of course, Nippon is concerned to get this revetment restored. Now, through a 1976 agreement with the Army Corps, with the Army Corps and the city, there's a 10.9% cost of share requirement for any work done along Easethook. So, the Army Corps has estimated $400,000 to complete this work. So, the cost share is approximately $45,000, which is what we're providing to the Army Corps upfront. They will not start any work until they receive money, the 10.9%. Any funds that are left over will be returned to the city. So, this is just an estimate to get the contract awarded, and again, the city will not be awarding the contract, it will be the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, since part of the property Nippon sits on is... Now, since part of the property Nippon sits on is city property and part is their own, we will be, part of this request in the memo is that we will be including cost share agreement with Nippon, rather than the share in this, their cost share or our cost share for the project, that's still being negotiated, all this came to light today when the Army Corps gave us their estimate of four hundred thousand dollars. So we're trying to get this moving forward quickly before the next storm, so we're asking the council to provide, city manager, with the authority to provide forty-five thousand dollars for that cost of share, cost share for the contract, and then also allow him to, city manager, to execute a cost share agreement with Nippon for their reimbursement of this effort. That'll take any questions?
Where is the money coming from?
It's coming from the mayor, will you have any help? Yeah, explain how this, the funding for this, this is, will be considered a street project, although the street fund is a separate fund, not part of the general fund, the street fund does not have any resources, so it really becomes a general fund expense. We will advance the full cost of the forty or forty-five thousand to the Army Corps, we will wire that to them tomorrow, then when we reach an agreement with Nippon on the cost share, then Nippon will reimburse us for their portions of cost, but it is a general fund expense that will come out of our unappropriated fund balance or savings account. Greg, will you have the tape?
Yes, I understand that. Okay, I have a question that deals with the ecology. I was under the impression that the Corps of Engineers has not, has changed from going from hard armoring to soft armoring, or no armoring, and knowing that the, with the sand coming down from the Ela River that that's going to rebuild that, and so actually the stones are actually cutting the process of rebuilding of Edes Hook, so I'm a little surprised that they are okay with adding all the stones back. So has this been, I guess, reviewed with some of those scientists that are actually working to get rid of a lot of the armoring along the shore?
I can't speak to the future designs of the Army Corps for that area, this is simply a maintenance project to restore what was there in the past, whether the Army Corps changes how they do their armoring, that's probably something that we need to discuss with the Army Corps at a future date. If there's soft armoring put in there, it would take quite a long time to design, probably more than months, and this area will wash out doing damage to the Nippon's water treatment plant.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I, it just doesn't make sense to put something up there and then know that in time it's only going to come down, and I guess we need to protect what's there as well, but fighting the forces of nature is amusing that, so I'm just a little concerned about that. Not exactly sure I'm in the fold of this, but just what I mentioned.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to authorize the city manager to provide the United States Army Corps of Engineers up to forty-five thousand dollars to enable repair of the storm damage to the riprap revetment and to execute a cost share agreement with Nippon.
Can I second that motion?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, is there further discussion?
Yes, please. How long is it going to take, Greg, to discuss this with Nippon and come to an agreement?
We've, we're looking at any past agreements that have been done on past projects, and also we'll be looking at the elimination between Nippon both sits on city property and sits on Nippon property, so we need to see where that line is, and that'll probably be a driving factor on the present.
I don't want to lose anything as far as an asset goes, but that area is only used by Nippon to my knowledge, and I would be very curious as to the final outcome of the negotiated agreement to protect a private industry asset or community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, there will be some discussions primarily tomorrow morning.
To help with that, it's my understanding that the majority of the property affected is in fact adjacent to Nippon or on the Nippon side. We can also at the next council meeting give, under information, give a briefing to the council on what that agreement looked like, we should have something in place by them and the rationale, the agreement, so the council will see that.
I guess my point in all this is that there's a specific reason why they chose to operate right next to the salt water, they do get benefits from putting their water outside into the city of Onafuka, as well as they're able to run their digestor out there in those fields where they pump that water, so just kind of my position that it comes with territory that that will say, so I hope that that is what's carried through on the final negotiations which, and reporters will give back to council. Thank you.
I would like to add that I am uncomfortable with it because we have such efforts that we had in cleaning up our coast that I would like to, before we move forward, if we can at least talk to like the Coastal Watership Institute that, you know, that's local, that's working with our shoreline, to see if this, the Corps of Engineers solution is actually what we should move forward with. I hate to just add money to put revetment in place that, or might actually be damaging the overall environment. I understand that Nippon may be a little vulnerable, but I wonder if there's maybe some more ecological solutions that are available to us. So I would really, would like to have that conversation with some of the scientists who are studying this process of happening right now in our coast as it's changing, before we begin.
Councilmember Broke, I would support emergency repairs for this, and I believe that the other course of action will take a number of months, if maybe not years, to resolve, so four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but if that opening becomes larger, we're talking, who knows what the end result could be in order for that employer to keep putting money or with on.
I concur with Councilmember Wyman, it's an emergency repair and I think we need to move on.
And, well, I would agree that an emergency repair needs to happen, what I would agree to though is that there's a couple of different ways you could do that repair, and I would like, I would prefer to have a whole place in the community or even like that, a conversation before doing the revetment and putting back the big stones, to see if they, if you put the sand, you know, we took a lot of sand out when we were cleaning that the water, the water facility, and so that may be able to stop some of that.
Yeah, if I can add, yeah, you probably don't have the photographs in front of you, the, the boulders that were removed from the storm were probably multi-tonnes, so putting sand back in, as we discovered when we re-nursh in front of the landfill, within one tide cycle, it's gone, so it needs, the only thing that's going to stop the wave action from continuing to eat, eat the, right now, it's all that's left is cobbles along the shoreline, it should be eating through over the next couple of storms. I understand your concerns with building woody degrees, if we're looking at that on the Ela River for redirecting flow, it is a long process and a long process to design, engineered log jams or woody debris, log jams, so it would take several months of design effort, and then probably that would require different permitting than just rebuilding what was there.
Yeah, I, like I said, I know that what would help as well is as soon as that beach can grow, like I said, whether we put it in stone or in sand, the growing of that beach can slow down the wave action, so, but I know that we have time, Eric, that's just my two cents on it.
Is there further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, call for the question, motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is.
Mr. Mayor, I can't hear you, I can hear Mike.
Can you hear me now?
Fairly.
Fairly?
Yes.
Is it?
For our council reports, which I say this is as high volume as possible.
Is it okay?
Yeah, good, okay.
All right, so our council reports, I'll start to, I'll give the opportunity to our bill of service, Michael, you're going to be coming in here, that's on, your first day really, I guess, but, do I move again?
Well, just been the first day taking it all, and this is a new experience, and happy to be here, happy to help the city move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to take this opportunity once again, welcome Councilmember Meredith, we're so happy that you're with us on this council, and, and my report is, it's an exciting week for Port Angeles, our sister city of Musu, Japan, is coming to visit us, including their mayor, and middle school students, and a delegation, so they arrive Wednesday, they'll be here at City Hall Thursday morning, the children will have an opportunity to tour the classroom and interact with our students, it's going to be a busy, busy time, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we'll have opportunities to interact with our, our friends from Musu. Musu, Japan is on the northern part of Japan, it's on a harbor with a mountain behind it, geographically it's similar to Port Angeles, but it takes a very long time and a great deal of transportation to come all the way to Port Angeles, so we, we're grateful that they're coming in, we're going to have a good time welcoming the state, so thank you.
Councilmember Wyman.
I too would like to take this opportunity to welcome Mike onboard, I look forward to maybe resolve a few things on here. To those members that are still here about fluoride, I really thank you for staying involved with the people. I think it's pretty evident what happened tonight is, we're going to get out of this next fluoride contract, it's just a matter of time, and I urge everyone that's concerned and involved with this to stay aboard, do show up in two weeks, let us know how you feel, but again, I support the will of people, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yes, I do, to welcome Michael, glad to have you onboard, of course, reports, I plan to attend part of the festivities with Musu, tour Thursday morning, but then I'm off to Olympia for the Cascadian Fault Line Conference with the governor and some various people in the state, and I'll report on that when I return. Thank you.
Councilmember Broke.
Well, right, and also, and I just also want to thank everybody for coming, for your opinions and for your support, I think that we need to work together in positive ways to find solutions for our current issues, and to help the communities to be enlarged, come together and move forward, so I just encourage everybody to keep being engaged, and I look forward to seeing you all in two weeks, I will be back in Port Angeles after the month.
Councilmember Broke.
Welcome Mike, onboard.
I have one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I realize you're not here, but Elise Kalin will be ninety-seven years old on the tenth of this month, so we're going to meet.
Seventeen, on the seventeenth.
Oh, the seventeenth?
Yes.
Ninety-seven.
Originally, I attended PA can, a meeting recently, which I previously attended as well, is a group of local citizens who are trying to find constructive and positive ways to deal with our horrific substance abuse home, I welcome, I'm encouraging you to find your website, also met with folks from another local civic group called Our Town who are working collaboratively with them, and also our based partner, both of these groups along with revitalized Port Angeles are well-intended with their efforts to try to deal with making progress, this is a terrible issue, substance abuse particularly airline and cocaine, Mr. Mayor, and I'm grateful to have the chance to participate and encourage each of you, as you have time to do it, and get on your respective websites and see what you can do to lend a hand. Lastly, I have had the opportunity, as I stated earlier, to meet with a number of local citizens on this issue surrounding fluoride, I want to extend again the invitation to all of you who are here, as well as those of you who you speak to, obviously, very rightly, that my invitation stands, I welcome the opportunity to visit with each of you, not only on issues of fluoride, but anything you want to talk about, I actually enjoy the opportunity. So, item L on our agenda is information, there are some reports in our packet, but I want to turn the moment to Dan and Evan, see to it specifically, particularly the year-end work plan update, Dan, the quarters.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, in your packet, we have provided you with our end of the year report for our two thousand fifteen community work plan, it was, as you can see, it was a fairly aggressive work plan, this identifies the major projects and activities that the city conducted during two thousand fifteen, and there are over fifty of those that are in the work plan. This includes those items that were brought to you in the formal work plan shortly after the beginning of the year, and obviously, some things come up during the year, that fill up a lot of our time and effort, and those things that were significant, that were brought up during the year, are also added to the work plan. This does give you the status of all those projects, and if you have any questions about any of those projects, feel free to get ahold of any of the staff, and we would be glad to answer any questions on those projects, but it's sort of our report card at the end of the year showing all those things we've done and where we're at, but more importantly, it's also on the website, so the community can look at all those projects or activities and what the status of those are. Really, the best way to use the end of the year report though, is to use that in conjunction with the first work plan that is also on the website, and each of you, with the exception of one of you got a copy of that, it'd be getting of this last year, because in the original work plan, it has the rationale behind each of the projects, which is not included in the update, the update just pretty much has what the project is, the objective of the project, and the status of the project, so you can, if you want to go back and revisit some of the projects, you can go back and visit the rationale, so with that, we also have some meeting minutes from the Parks Department, if you have any questions, you can hold a director or delicate on that, and in closing, there were three action items that I noted, and I want to go over them with the council to make sure that we have those correct before we conclude, we're going to report back to the council on Nippon cost sharing agreement that we discussed, we're going to bring them back for the council, a discussion on fluoride specifically, what I have written down, different alternatives to the council, and, and the last item is that we're going to bring back some budget alternatives regarding funding for the EDC, and we did get some direction that the starting place for that would be the amount that we provided historically on that, but look at some other alternatives too. So if I have something wrong, let me know, or if I didn't, if there's something missed, let me know, and that's what I have now fraction of items.
Any further discussion about that? Okay, we have ended that part of the agenda, which in previous terms, as soon as the second public comment period. I'm gonna put an asterisk here. By saying and following you. The public comment period is notwithstanding, but perhaps some people may feel otherwise, is in fact a democracy. I, that's the irony for me. But the discussions that we've had here for today, personal attack, personal attack on a specific member of the council is really out of order. I think we need to be a bit more civil, quite a bit more civil than that. I think every one of us on the council welcome that part of the agenda where we provide to the public a chance for you to talk. You have the vote. I think, having said that, though, I would hope in the future, including the second public hearing, a public comment period tonight, and hearing the subsequent hearing, that you simply avoid personal attack. Consider it appropriate, it's out of order. It does not further the discussion. It really doesn't. And so, with that said, we'll open up our second public comment period. Anybody who's here before, here to forward, and not had an opportunity to speak on what is, you'd like to talk about. I would extend that opportunity to you right now. Any state voting, and you have yours.
I'm Jess Gable, and I live at 1117 South V-Body Street. And I did sign up, but no, I did not check the yes box. I'm here tonight to thank Mayor DeGiulio, Sissy Brook, and Lee Witten for doing what we elected him to do, listen to people, and guard public trust. Our democracy is rooted in honorable tenants. One being majority rules. Thank you, three, for honoring that tenant and voting against fluoridation. I extend a warm welcome to Councilwoman Michael Meredith. And I trust that he, too, will guard our public trust and abide by the tenants of democracy. It's not too late for you to really listen to us when we speak against fluoride. I'm going to say this one more time. I speak from experience when I know that fluoridation is not working in Port Angeles. And there are other ways that we can help children with our teeth. First of all, the doctors and the dentists, and we all heard that, coming up to the podium to speak about the multitude of cavities that exist in the children in Port Angeles. That alone should tell us that fluoridation is not working. That's an experience that you can experience, that we all can experience. Number two, as a council volunteer, that's a court-appointed special advocate for children at risk. I've had the privilege of working with families in Squim, Port Angeles, and Forks. And I saw full well that fluoridation was not working in Forks. It is not working in Forks. And the teeth of the children in Port Angeles and Squim, that at that point in time, the water was not fluoridated. And their teeth were not, they were, there's just no comparison. So, that's an experience. And I will certainly make an appointment to visit with Mayor Downey. And no, Mayor Downey, you won't have to wear an asbestos suit. I'm harmless, but I do have a voice. So, in this new year, where the council is at home, I pray that you work with we, the people, for the common good of all, and that we all work toward a common goal. This is something we can do, and we can address the fluoridation problem to the satisfaction and the welfare of all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would care? Please, go for it.
Cindy Turney, 530 West 8th Street. This is short. Respect is earned, not given. My council are talking about. It's not easy to earn someone's respect. It's really easy to lose respect. I didn't feel that there was any personal attack on any particular person tonight. I felt that the truth needed to be made public about the issues at hand, rather than naming names or accusing someone by name. But when somebody does something, the truth of that needs to be made public for everybody. Thank you.
Again, for those, someone who had not had the opportunity to speak before, I'd like to confirm. Okay, I mean, seeing none, and particularly for the benefit of Sissy and Brad, are approaching midnight. Conclude this meeting tonight. And I invite you all to our meeting on January 15th. I knew this. Right, thank you. Okay, we'll have a jury. Do you agree with the chairman?
I would like to accept this nomination for Jellydale, Port Angeles. I've listened to you, and I believe you. No, I mean, thank you very much.
You're the people.
Okay.
And we're not going away.
Let's now go to our section of our agenda. Underneath, I have a list of names. Please know that there are two sections of our agenda regarding, it's the second public comment section, section N. So, given the limited nature of our agenda this evening, I expect that there'd be time to speak in our public period. Our period will be, as it has been in the past, we invite you to report. I hope to pronounce all these names correctly. If I don't, my apologies in advance. We invite you to remember your comments, to be respectful of others who follow you to up to three minutes. And please, I invite us to be civil tonight. But we do wanna hear from you again. Please accept my invitation and go to the list. I stand prepared to talk to each of you. As I think every member of the council. You can access us by email, in person, however you wish. You stand prepared to hear your comments both this evening and as your time is scheduled for this. So, first up on the list is Cindy Turney. You state your likes or resentments.
Cindy Turney, 530 West 8th Street. Well, so much for the fluoride survey. You all were given ample, now, above and beyond amounts of scientific studies and evidence regarding the ineffectiveness of ingesting fluoride and documented harmful effects it has on the human body. Stacks of actual unbiased studies proven this to be true. You either didn't read or consider these well-documented studies, or you have been bamboozled. And I looked that word up. It means to mislead or cheat, to practice trickery or deception, meaning was done to you. There are only so many logical reasons for you, for your inept decision. The only remaining explanation is that you will receive a personal benefit. This is my logical opinion. The survey was non-inclusive. Apartment dwellers were not included. And some households have one utility bill and three or four adults living there, 18 years or older. Every person receiving fluoridated water aged 18 and older needed to be given a survey. This was not a survey. And it does not reflect the public's opinion on this issue. Some of the zealous proponents of fluoridated water received money from Washington Dental Services Foundation, is CEO on the board of the Dental Association, and/or has invested stock in the Dental Association. Major conflict of interest. These individuals should not have had any input, in my opinion. Even still, the opponent of medicating our water, those of us that are against medicine on our water, we still want the survey. Survey is not returned. Do not, do not indicate-
Listen to your comments, if you can. So, please respectfully offer the same in closing. I stand by those words. Every minute I did on first meeting of my first term. I think there are people in this audience, I know there are people in this audience who know that. What I really enjoy doing the most is talking eyeball-to-eyeball, heart-to-heart. So, as my trust you, I don't care how many of you there are, but there are people in this audience already tonight receiving this meeting, who've taken me up on the opportunity to talk to me, person to person, heart to heart, eyeball to eyeball. My invitation to you is, listening. And as mayor, I extend to each and every one of you in this room, whoever you are, what your perspective of your opinion of me or what we've done in the past. I give you the opportunity, and my sincere word, that I will meet you, person to person, face to face. And you can share your feelings with me. I really, really mean that. I don't care how long it takes. I don't count how many days you're involved. But don't do it the way you just did it. That doesn't serve both of us. If you have feelings you wanna share with me, if you wanna try to figure out how we work together to be the best we can be, together, I stand prepared to do that. With that said, let's go to the next part of our meeting, the deputy public comment period.
Is the mayor, you can get me mayor?
Oh, I saw the side of your party. My apologies. We needed deputy mayor. I mean, need that one, then anybody else? So, with that said, can we accept nominations for physician and deputy mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Sissy Brook for deputy mayor.
Any other nominations for physician and deputy mayor? I will put forward the nomination of Councilmember and former mayor, Sissy Kid, as deputy mayor.
Sure, sure.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Most members of the council, I speak in the hallway here for those of you who are out of the room, that first nomination is for Sissy Brook. All those in favor of Sissy Brook as deputy mayor, please say yes.
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 So-
How are you even capable of being mayor? You don't even know your councilor.
So-
No, that's ridiculous.
That were a total of- Those in favor of nomination?
I'd actually have, what's your official count on that? For Sissy Brook?
I believe it was three, Councilmember Wedge, Brook, and Meredith in favor.
Thank you.
And for the nomination of deputy mayor, Sherry Kid, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Yeah.
What about the people?
Yeah.
It's our city.
Okay, so, now we have a total of three votes for Sissy Brook and four votes for Sherry Kid.
We're high. Kate, a yes for fluoride vote. That is ridiculous and divisive. When any one of us do our jobs poorly, or are inadequate, or being deceitful, we lose our jobs, and rightfully so. We, the people of Port Angeles, pay you to represent us, whether you agree with an issue or not. Some of you have lost our trust and support, and are not representing the majority of the people. And in my opinion, these people need to step down from their elected or appointed positions, or be recalled. The kind of politics Port Angeles is experiencing is the kind of situation that by word of mouth gets around quickly, even all around the country. And it will be a huge detriment to all of the people of Port Angeles.
The next on the list is Emily Skerritt. She'll need to have the microphone to her.
Good evening, and yellow lead Kaylin, for protect of the innocent future, and I live in Squim. Happy new year. We can and will fix the fluoridation problem. A monumental mistake was made by the four members of this council.
Yeah, we have to move.
Who were influenced by pro-fluoride advocates to apply the city's unique police powers to force continued fluoridation. They erred in ignoring the expressed voted wishes of 57% of water consumers when they gave themselves the power to countermand those issues. Some 2,381 households, causing over 7,000 people object. The fluoride floor cited to recommendations from local professionals who told you fluoride must be put in the water because poor children cannot avoid it. Avoid it? My goodness. Well, that's compliance with medication in medical terms. That's their goal, and it slams directly against the principle of informed consent to medication, a constitutional right, which by the way, is not supposed to be confined to the wealthy. Note that a glitzy, expensive campaign failed to convince your water users that fluoridation was a public benefit. Professionals are supposed to be moral and and are legally unable to force medication on competent adults. But they achieved their end through persuasion of the four council persons who actually exercised this police power last December 15th. What to do? The easy answer would be a motion for reconsideration and reversal of at least one council person- of at least one council person's vote for ongoing fluoridation. This would settle the matter with cessation of fluoridation after May 18, 2001-6. That's this year. A slower but effective process for citizen control of run-of-the-governance representatives can be achieved by the process of changing the form of municipal government to one authorized by RCW 35. Adoption of a new form of government under RCW 35 means all officers, including all council members, are freshly elected when the new government is adopted. Rules and local options are set out in state laws, RCW 35 and RCW 35A. Our immediate priority is legal research to select the design features of what this new government.
Designation of certified municipal leader through the American, or the, excuse me, the Washington Association of Cities and that'd be our current deputy mayor, Kelly.
Are there any other nominations?
For the record, for the record, I'd ask that each of the names put forth would accept the nomination.
It would be an honor to accept the nomination.
And I really deeply appreciate the courtesy of this. Any other? Any others? Okay, that's the end of this process. We'll start with Sissy Brook. His name has been put in nomination. I'll just ask for those that are not here, Sissy and Brad, to just be clear so we can understand your vote. So I could ask those in favor of Sissy Brook to serve as mayor, please say yes.
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 And similarly ask those that would say yes in behalf of Patrick Kelly, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So let me make sure I staffed and let's make sure I, about this one. You know, three votes for Sissy Brook and four votes for myself. Okay. Now, I don't know what to say. I know that you know.
You don't respect us, we do not respect you.
Agreed. I, I will say just one thing, break my head and we'll proceed with the meeting.
Your sign's up, so go on.
Those of you who know me well enough to know that I will come to these meetings with prepared statements. I speak with my heart. I, I truly, I cannot tell you how grateful I am and feel the privilege to serve this community. I want to, I hope you can all hear me. I, you can all hear me? Okay, let me speak as loud as I can here. Those that know me well, know that I have always, and I'm going to speak for the council too, to the extent that I can, in this respect. I don't know of anybody I've ever known who served on the council who hasn't had the best interests of this city hurt. I really mean this sincerely. I also then will close by saying this. My campaign literature, my campaign sign, seven years ago when I ran for the position of some council, said we need to work together to be the best that we can possibly do. Do me the courtesy and give me a chance to finish. You're going to each of you have an opportunity in just a minute. During the present public comment period, to share your feelings. We are welcoming to our meeting, first meeting of the new year as the Port Angeles City Council. So we will begin with a meeting called a meeting at 4, 601. So do we have a rule?
Deputy Mayor Downey?
Here.
Councilmember Brook?
Here, Deputy Paul.
Councilmember Collins?
Here, Deputy Paul.
Councilmember Gates?
Here.
Councilmember Kidd?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Meredith?
Here.
Mayor McKee?
Here.
Attorney Gore?
Here.
Okay, so we'll have a pledge of allegiance and I'd like to invite our newest member of the council, Michael Meredith, to the seat of the president.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business will see us the election of a mayor and deputy mayor. I'm going to invite our city attorney, the board to take the moment just to vote through the procedure that we're talking about. Take a moment. Then we'll listen to the city's发言.
Sure, just an hour line of procedure that the council has followed in prior years. Nominations can be made by any council member. Nomination should not require a second. After all the nominations are made, they will proceed to vote on each name individually. The first name, first person who wins a majority vote is elected mayor. So someone has a majority before all the names are called, the voting ends at that point. If you go through the list of names and there is no majority, then you usually go through the list and vote again in case somebody changes their position. If after going through the list twice, there is no majority, then you would switch to a weighted ballot system as we did last year.
Okay, then with that said, I would entertain nominations for the election of mayor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Sissy Brook.
Are there any other nominations for position here?
Yeah, Mr. Deputy, I'd like to make the nomination for a person that's been on the council for a number of years, has a great deal of experience, has put countless hours of volunteer time off the grid, behind the scenes for the support of our citizens of Port Angeles. Person that's gone through the designation process to achieve the.